I'd like to call this meeting of the Northwest Local School District Board of Education to order. Amy, if you would please call a roll.
Mr. Unger.
Here.
Mr. Harlow.
Here.
Mr. Detsel.
Here.
Mrs. Detsel, here.
Mr. Heeder.
Here. If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next item is approval of minutes. Dr. Jackson?
We have the minutes from the regular board meeting on February 23rd. The treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the minutes as listed.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is legislative update. Mr. Harlow.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. The Ohio House is continuing to meet, continuing to hold hearings on the budget. I'm going to take a second here to pull up my report here, but the, they're also, the Senate has held hearings, has continued to hold hearings, on a bill that would exempt certain high-performing districts from the, from a lot of the state requirements. The House is also holding hearings on a bill that would provide some mandate relief. And the safe harbor provision, I know that's been of interest to a number of people, the safe harbor provision passed the Senate unanimously, and so that's going to go to the governor for signature. If I can just back up here, the House heard sponsor testimony on a bill which would reduce the time students spend on taking standardized tests, as well as calling for a reduction on time spent preparing for and administering the tests. The House is also hearing testimony on a bill which would make some reforms to the management and operation of charter schools. The Finance Committee Subcommittee on K-12 Education has continued to hear testimony from interested parties, including the Ohio School Board Association, the Buckeye Association of School Administrators, and the Ohio Association of School Business Officials. The Senate continues to hold hearings on mandate relief, as I mentioned earlier, and the Senate also agreed, as I mentioned earlier, to the House's Hold Harmless Bill which would exempt students this year from promotion or retention based on standardized test scores. So that's my update.
Thank you, Mr. Harlow. The next item is our Butler Tech update. Mr. Detsel.
Yeah, Dan, I just have one thing. The Colrain Robotics team over the weekend won first place in their regional competition, and they're going on to the Nationals in St. Louis. I don't know the exact date when that is, but they'll be listed in the Northwest Notables coming up for us.
Paul, you did a great job because it was on the news. A picture and everything, Channel 5 tonight.
There were 58 Corrane High School students and two Northwest High School students that were part of that, and I believe it's April 22nd to the 26th is the timeframe for St. Louis.
It was nice to see on the news.
Jim, how's the building coming up there?
Everything's enclosed. Whenever you guys want to go up and get a tour, we can go up there at any time. Just let me know and we can set that up.
It's all on schedule and everything?
Yep. Everything is on schedule.
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Detsel. Our next item is a principal's report. Dr. Jackson?
I'd like to introduce Mr. Eric Dunn, Principal of Pleasant Run Elementary. And he's going to come up and give an update on his building improvement plan, and Mrs. Andrea Childress is also going to join him, it looks like. I wasn't sure if you were going to present or just there for moral support, so I don't know until you got up.
Well, I do appreciate the opportunity for you guys to have us tonight to talk about some initiatives that we're doing at Pleasant Run Elementary. The one initiative we did want to cover tonight is one that I think we're most proud of this year. This is an issue that was, initiative that was born out of our office, and we weren't directed to do this through a improvement plan, or Dr. Jackson, or anybody curriculum. This is something that we really developed on our own because we saw a need for it within our community. And that is an initiative called P R University, which is a parent involved in the night that we've been doing this year with the sole focus to bring parents into our building, introduce them to some educational topics, and more importantly, to give them something tangible to take home that they'll be able to use with their students to make academic gains in theory. How this all came about, like I said, is we've seen in the last couple of years the need for our parents to be educated on what's going on in school, especially with the new standards coming, and all this coming with the Common Core and parking and all that. I feel like parents, at least in our building, have kind of been lost in the shuffle, and they hear bits and pieces of what's going on, but they don't really understand what that means for their child. So this was a chance to really kind of run a university, or run a class for parents on kind of the new school that we've come into this year, and then give them the tools that they can get, in turn give their kids to succeed. We were very fortunate to get a partner this year, Rolling Hills Baptist Church. As fate would have it, we decided to do this, I feel like, in late June, early July. My big thing was I wanted to bring the parents in, entice them to come. And the big thing for me was to provide a meal. If we could provide a meal, if we could find a way to get funding, to give them, you know, some food, give them a family dinner, we probably would get a much better turnout than just having them come at seven o'clock on a rainy Tuesday. To my surprise, in early July, I was slaving away in my office, as I do at the beginning of every July, because there's so much to do in July. And there was a, my doorbell rang at Pleasant Run Elementary, so I answered the door, and there was two gentlemen. They introduced themselves, they said they were pastors at Rolling Hills Baptist Church. They were just driving by, and they just wanted to pop in and see if there's anything they could do for our school. So I brought them in the office, and I said, "Well, since you asked," I kind of laid out our idea for P R University, and I said, "You know, you guys good at cooking meals? Could you cook for maybe three or 40 people?" Because we didn't think this would be very big. And they said, "Sure, we can cook, you know, we do that all the time." So we partnered with them moving forward this year. They've been out three different times to help us. Fortunately for us, unfortunately for them, 30 to 40 people has turned into 120, 140 people.
That's awesome.
But they've been very faithful in coming in. The first night they did, what was the first night they did?
Spaghetti dinner.
Spaghetti dinner. The second night was soup to salads. This last night was a really nice lasagna dinner, so they pull out all the stops for our parents and do a very good job. So I definitely want to credit Rolling Hills Baptist for all that they've done for us this year. So we do entice the parents with the free meal, totally free of charge. They come in at 6:30. The first time that we did it, it was actually really neat to see Andrea actually pointed it out, I was speaking it, but I didn't vocalize it. It was the first time in a while that we've really felt a sense of community in one of our events, where people weren't grabbing walking tuckers and hitting on the door at a PTA event, but they're actually coming, sitting down together, breaking bread together as a community. There's about 120 people total, so we really felt like that was something neat that we had been lacking in, at least our community and our side of the district, for a while. So we've done three nights so far this year, and Ms. Childress is going to talk about them. The first one was a technology night. The whole focus was on technology, card testing, progress book, the technology our kids are using in class with smart boards and stuff like that. The second night was a focus on math. You know, our parents, more than anything, need help on what the new math is, because a big problem for our parents is, they go to work on the, to work with their kids, and then they realize that all the steps that they're used to doing when they grew up are totally different now. So they'll start walking through a problem, and then their kid says, "What are you talking about, Mom? You're totally off in left field. That's not how we do it now." And then the parents are thinking, "Well, I don't know how to help my kid. I know I'm only doing fourth grade work, that's totally different than when I was in fourth grade." So to give them the tools to be successful in math, and then just this past week, we had a language arts meeting as well, where we, again, talked about where we were in terms of the language arts curriculum, and giving them some tangible tools. So at the end of each night, what we wanted was the parents to walk out with something in their hand, and we're going to pass out what they've gotten here in just a moment. But something that they could actually take home and work with their kids on at home. And like I said, the end result being that hopefully they can help their kids at home, and everybody's achievement will eventually go up. On the other side, we wanted to make sure this was something for kids as well. The kids were invited. So what we've done is, the first night we did kind of a try-on Eric game, movie night for some of the older kids, and a craft night for some of the younger kids. We tell them, "Bring the entire family. We don't care if they're in diapers, we don't care if they're 16. Bring your entire family. Everybody's going to eat, everybody's going to have something to do." The second and third nights, we've actually brought in two of our teachers who have done line dancing in the gym. So the real little kids will still go out and do crafts with Ms. Childress, but the bigger kids, seven to, you know, 17 or whatever, will go in the gym and do line dancing. They do the cha-cha slide, the electric slide, the cupid shuffle, which I personally, Mr. Unger's favorite. So they do that while the parents are in class, again, learning on how to help them. So what I'm going to do right now is introduce Ms. Childress here, who is my assistant, who has helped greatly develop these nights, especially on the curriculum side.
Okay, so Mr. Dunn is going to hand out a packet. It's pretty much just an overview of what we did each of the three nights. If you turn, oh wait, to be clear.
Thank you.
How we came up with our themes. At our open house at the beginning of the year, we rolled this out to parents, told them that this was what we were going to be doing, and asked for ideas. What would you like to learn more about? So overwhelmingly, technology was the number one thing, and then like in height, it was math. So those were the first two nights that we presented. The first night, you can see we held that on November 6th. What you have in front of you behind that page are some pictures and slides from one of the powerpoint that the teachers used. So they planned to address technology needs. They talked about reading counts, which is a program that our librarian runs. I don't actually have the individual handouts that went with each of these. This just kind of gives you an idea of what we talked about. They went to, they did progress book. They actually took parents in progress book, made sure they knew how to log in. They talked about different websites that they're using, the Pride Time, which is our intervention and development time during the day. They talked about what you can do at home, and they went to some different math sites that were available. Talked about some things that they work on in Skills Lab, which is like a special that the kids go to once a week in the computer lab. They talked briefly about the next generation of testing. So they had some cards with login information, so the parents knew how to get into card. At that time, there wasn't a whole lot available for air, but they did introduce them to those sites as well. The next night was January 13th, and that was the math night. And when we were planning this, you know, we, as a district, have spent years now trying to wrap our minds around the Common Core, and what's this going to look like? And we had an hour. So we tried to figure out what could you focus on that would be most beneficial to parents. So each of the grades, fourth and fifth grade, had kind of a Common Core glance, talked about the key components of the grade level. So like with fourth grade, the big emphasis in fourth grade is multiplication. And it's not just learning multiplication the way you and I learned. So it, you know, they spend weeks on different types of problems, different types of algorithms, things that the kids can do to solve those problems. So our fourth grade teachers had several flipbooks that they made with parents, and I have a couple of examples of those. And then what this, when I pass it along, the way you can look at it is, it's the same problem shown three different ways. So the parents have this as a reference when they're helping their kids at home. And then the second flipbook is on fractions. And again, talks about how you can compare fractions, some different methods that the kids are learning. And again, this way they have this when they're helping with homework at home. Then you can also see the fifth grade math. They had their overview as well. They had some, I apologize, these were printed on colored paper, so when I got, you know, they sent them to me, it was pretty dark, and I tried to lighten it. But how they, how you can help your students with math facts. When we went through this night, primarily, the parents, they didn't really want to be talked at. They wanted practical ideas. In fifth grade, it turned into just problem after problem. Show me how you did this problem. So, you know, the teachers had a plan, and it kind of ran out the door because they responded to what the parents really needed, which was just some time to go through the process of, you know, solving some of the problems that their kids are bringing home. And then our final night was English and Language Arts. And again, the Common Core is so big to try to cover it all in one night. What the teachers did for that night is they focused on the one standard that they are working on right now with our TDTs. So in fourth grade, they are in the process of looking at comparing and contrasting treatment of similar themes and topics. And what we decided to do is show parents how that, that standard fits into the continuum of learning from K through 12. And then we did the same thing in fifth grade. They're working on an informational standard, which is compare and compare to overall structure, chronology, comparison, cause and effect, problem solution of events, ideas, concepts, or information into a more text. So again, we showed them how that looks at the kindergarten level. We talked about how the Common Core has these anchor standards that build from K through 12, and you can basically see the continuum. And then, just like this, the teachers actually showed them some practical things that they did in the classroom. And that's kind of how we planned the night, because we wanted to make sure we touched upon the core, but also touched upon how it looks in the classroom.
That is fantastic. The biggest part of that is getting people in the door, because we have sat up here as a board and heard people say, "You're doing great, you're doing poorly with your academics." And my answer's always been, gee, we need to get the parents engaged. And if you were able to get 120 people to show up, hats off to you, because I think that's the, that's what we really need to do. You had me at the first line when you said that. So congratulations on your success.
And it really was a need of parents. It wasn't just, you know, it would expand the whole.
Well, I think what was key is, yes, your teachers were prepared to do something, but it was okay for them to deviate from that, because bottom line, you adjust, you help answer the questions the parents had, because that's what the night was about. The other thing that's real impressive is Rolling Hills Baptist Church, for those of you that don't know, they aren't even in our school district. They're in Fairfield. So very, I mean, that's awesome.
But several of our families, I can remember.
Right. But that's, that's just awesome. And Eric, that's great. I mean, somebody knocks on your door and asks, I mean, the worst they can say is no, so good for you for asking, because look what it's turned into. That's, that's great.
Just to give you the, just a quick idea on numbers. First time we had, we had about, probably about 100, 105. Second night, we had about 110. And then this last night, we had, we had about 130 sign up, but this is last Tuesday night where we had the rain turn into sleet, turn ice, and they did it the next day. So we ended up having about 60 show up. I think we would have had quite a bit more. I want to introduce, she was a little bit late, but this is Ms. Williams, one of our parents. Just to talk about her perspective, the reason I bring Ms. Williams, and this is said in all sincerity, she's kind of my go-to. She quote-unquote keeps her reel with me all the time. So when things go well, she's the first one to say, "Mr. Dunn, that went awesome." When things don't go well, she's the first one to say, "Man, Mr. Dunn, I love what you're doing, but..." It really didn't go so well. So I wanted her to just kind of share her perspective on P R University.
Okay. Okay. Well, I am Theresa Williams, and my daughter has been in the Northwest School District since the first grade. And this year, with the adopting of the P R University, has been very helpful. I guess more so for, I know for myself and the parents, with all the changing of the standards, and, you know, most of the topics, the last two topics that we had were focused on the Common Core. So there's a lot of parents like myself who just don't really understand what it really means and how it impacts the kids. And so in doing that, it bridges that gap between the parents and the school, you know, that letting us know that, hey, these, you know, who cares? You know, school district is interested in wanting to know the parents' input, how the kids are doing, and the parent involvement, because as parents, we want to know how we can help. And so for me, that was a plus, and I know a lot of the other parents, it's a plus.
And I think, I think it's awesome, and it's important, too, that you're comfortable enough to let him know if something maybe could have gone a little better, or give those suggestions, because that's the only way we're going to keep improving. So, thank you. I mean, that's, that's.
The significance was, I'm here when we said it, but she was the parent in fifth grade that said, "Okay, I just need help to sort pro, do this properly." So she had, we told them that we kind of changed what we were doing. We didn't know.
But that's, that's really.
That was a nice presentation, and the timing of you walking in was perfect.
And I thought your daughter, she's just over there smiling, proud of Mom up here, too.
The comment I had made was, just getting those people in the door, that's 99% of it there, and congratulations on your success, and I can't wait to see how you keep this growing, so, thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Our next item is report from employee organizations. Is there anyone here from the certified licensed employee group that would like to speak? I see no one. Is there anyone here from our classified employee group that would like to speak? I see no one. Report from school-related organizations. Is there someone here from a school-related organization that would like to speak this evening? I see no one. We'll move into community communications. I have one yellow card, and it's from our friend at Waycross, Chip Burquist, and Chip's going to talk about how we're doing with our public access television and communication. Thank you for coming, Chip.
I just want to start off, I've had some questions about our channel lineup. Time Warner's in the process of upgrading to digital, so they've been moving some channels around. And this only really affects people who have cable-ready TVs, where they plug the cable directly in the TV, don't have a box. They've recently moved our channels from the Channel 99 range down to channels in Channel 5. So the school board meetings like this are on our government channel, and they can be seen on Channel 5.16. And the other stuff that we do for the district, the concerts, the sports, the academic events can be seen on Channel 5.11.
And that's in Colrain or in all the townships?
That's in all of, all the Waycross communities, and throughout Great Cincinnati that have access. So one thing, if you, it's only good for, it only works on HDTV's with the QAM tuners, which most TVs that have been sold in the last five years that are HD would work with this. You plug the cable into the back of the box, but you have to rescan. So if you used to watch our programming on Channel 99.1, you would need to rescan to be able to watch it on 5.16. So I wanted to update that and let people know that. Analog TVs, the older box TVs, no longer can receive our channels without a DTA or a converter box. And a DTA is just a tiny box that does the basic channels, like the access channels and the local affiliates. That's, I believe they're charging like $1.50 a month for that right now. So if you have an older TV, they're not really cable-ready anymore, but you can get that DTA to do that. I also just want to, our regular, our lineup on the cable boxes. Our programming is on both Time Warner Cable and Cincinnati Bell Fioptics. So on Time Warner Cable, our government channel, which shows the school board meetings, trustee meetings, county commissioners meetings, those can be seen on Time Warner Cable, Channel 8, and Cincinnati Bell Fioptics, Channel 853. So Cincinnati Bell does not have a cable-ready option. So if you, you have to have a cable box for Cincinnati Bell. So programming there is on 853 or Channel 8 on Time Warner. Our education channel, which is where we show the games, the concerts, and the other programming that we do for the Northwest District, is on Time Warner Channel 4 or Cincinnati Bell Fioptics, Channel 854. And we have a public access channel, which is Time Warner 979, cable-ready 5.12, and that, we do show some games and whatnot on that to fill time on the channel as well. All programming that we produce for the district can be seen online at waycross.tv/nvod.html. And that's a special page we have set up just for Northwest programming. So if you go to that page, everything that we've done, you know, in the past year or two is on there. So you can go back and watch old school board meetings, you can watch old games, you can watch old concerts, that kind of stuff.
And I did not, I was not aware of that site. Is that, when I get the occasional email from the, from the administration that talks about Waycross, is there a link on our page where people could click right on that, or?
I believe there is, but could you say what that link is again? Yes, it's www.waycross.tv/nvod.html.
Okay. Make sure it's on.
One of the programs that we've been doing for the last couple of years, I wanted to highlight, is we do a program called This is Northwest, Your Local School District. It's a half-hour program that we do bimonthly at this point, and it features things that we don't normally cover. You know, we do a lot of sports, we do a lot of concerts, but we didn't really get into what's going on in the classroom. So this highlights different things that are going on in classrooms and in all of the schools, basically. At this point, we've been to every school, doing a different segment. The one that's running right now, the current one, features two segments. One's on the Butler Tech Programming and Software Development Program, which is housed at Corrane's Career Center. And then the second one, and that had a lot to do with the robotics, so there's a section on the robotics.
Maybe you guys can go to St. Louis and, and.
I'd love to do that. Have to see if that's in the budget, but that would be a great trip. And also, the second segment on this, on this month's program is one we did at Mofford Heights Elementary, and it features the children's librarian from Mofford Heights Public Library. And she did a kind of a neat program. What she did, she came in and said, "What if famous characters from, from the fairy tales went on trial for what they did in the fairy tale?" The one that we featured is Goldilocks. So basically, what if, what if the three bears called the police on Goldilocks for stealing their por, for eating their porridge and breaking into their house? So, and what, the way she works it, she does the prosecutor and the defense attorney, explains what everything goes on, and then the kids are the jury, so they decide whether the person, whether Goldilocks was guilty or innocent. So it was kind of an interesting program, and that's something that most people don't know that they've been existed in our elementary.
How did it turn out?
Stay tuned. You have to watch.
Go find out what happened. Go find out what happened. And then she did a couple of other ones. She did the three bears. I mean, so there's, there's a couple of, well, that's, she also did Red Riding Hood and the Wolf and that kind of stuff. So it was pretty interesting.
That's cool.
Some of the other stuff that we've done in the past, all these programs are online from the past couple of years. The mock trial program at Colrain, we, last couple of years, we've done Veterans Day programs. So with that, what we do is go to all the elementary schools we can get to, and videotape their, their Veterans Day programs, and kind of put it together into a package. So that's been pretty interesting. We did a package on Houston Step Up the Quality Award that they've got, the Y-Gold Character Accounts Program, and it's just a lot of different stuff. So if you get a chance to check those out, they're available online and cable cast every other month. And if you want a complete listing of any of our programs, it's all on our website at waycross.tv.
Chip, I've, as you know, I haven't done it this year, but in the past, I've gone out and actually volunteered and ran a camera. And, you know, anybody, how would somebody find out about being a volunteer, and how would they pursue that?
Again, on our website, we have a list of upcoming productions. If they want to volunteer, they can just volunteer right there online, or give me a call, or give anybody of our staff a call. We have several students who volunteer and help us out on productions at the schools. So, I mean, it's a good way, it's a good, like, career training exploration path. A lot of kids, we've had a lot of kids who have come through and volunteered and have gone on to do television.
And it's a good way to learn how to operate all that equipment, and you learn for free, and you do a little work along the way, but, but I can't tell you how much I appreciate your work over the last nine years of having our meetings televised. I know it started out just in Springfield Township, and then Green, and then Colrain, and you've just really done a fabulous job with it. And, you know, we've got 15 people in the room, and we've got, you know, tens of thousands out in the community. And I know you get some feedback on how many hits you get on the website, and you've really done a lot of work to get our message out to the community, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So the whole staff there's done fabulous, and I know you're the heady guy, and you're out filming half the stuff, so you're.
It's not a small staff, but we try to give it my best we can.
Chip, are you able to, like, through, like, measuring, like, the signal draw or something, how many people are watching?
We can do it on, everything that's online, we can track. We cannot track through the cable, because cable companies won't give us those numbers.
Okay. I was wondering if there was any increase as time has progressed from what it was when it was just starting to what it is now, because the other night, I was flipping through, and strangely enough, a meeting from, like, like, November came up or something. I'm like, wow. Yeah. But the.
Well, November one shouldn't be on there still.
It was a couple months old, maybe it was December, but it was, it was 2014.
Okay.
Yeah. So, but it looked good, and, but I just was, I've had people tell me they've seen it, and I just didn't know if you had any real numbers.
We've tried to get numbers from the cable companies, but they won't share.
They won't give it to you.
They're not sharing that with us.
Well, please, please let this board know what we can do to help promote what you're doing. And I know Jim mentioned before the meeting about filming a Butler Tech meeting. If there's something that the five of us could do, I imagine I could find some consensus pretty quick on, on doing that. So, thank you so much for coming up to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was the only yellow card I had, so we will move on to the next item, which is superintendent's item, Certified Licensed Personnel. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we have one certified resignation, one tutor resignation, one extra duty resignation, one extra duty procedural resignation, and one athletic worker procedural resignation. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certified licensed personnel retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just real quick, dear friends, names on here, Robin Lyons, Maureen Farmer, for those of you that know, Robin will be retiring this year. She's been a longtime teacher at Monford Heights Elementary. We actually went to school together. She was in our wedding, just a great, great teacher, and it's been so much fun over the years. Anytime I'm somewhere and I meet kids that go to Monford Heights, alls I have to do is mention her name, and they just light up that they had her, or they wish they had her, and what a neat teacher. And Robin's from a long line of a very dedicated family to this district, and actually, she's the last one so far. Mark Farmer, our former administrator, his brother Tom Farmer, and Robin, and then their mother Martha was a longtime district employee, was, I believe it's Colrain Middle, the secretary, and they just, that family has dedicated their whole life to this district, and I just want to tell her how excited I am. She's getting to retire, and we'll miss seeing her at the events. But she is impacted, along with the rest of the farmers, so many kids in this district, so I want to wish her the best of luck.
Thanks, Pam. I think Tom is still subbing. I think he still comes around a little bit. Was there any other discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a classified personnel item. Dr. Jackson?
We have two classified resignations. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified retirements and resignations as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a fiscal item. Dr. Jackson?
I'll turn this over to our treasurer to explain these two new funds.
Yeah, we're going to set up a fund for our non-public Title I services, for when we bill our non-public schools, to be able to put that revenue back into. And then our Anthem for our health insurance, they give us a wellness incentive each year, so we're going to put that in there so we can track the expenditures related to that revenue stream.
So, is the idea behind the non-public, is that just to, to track it? Were you originally putting the money back into a different fund line, when, or how's that?
Yeah, we received some Title I monies for those services, and then they require additional services, which we bill separately for.
Okay.
And in the past, that revenue had been put in as a reduction of that expenditure into, or as revenue back into the federal grant. But that messes up the federal grant reporting, so this way we pull it out separately and report it separately.
Okay.
The treasurer and superintendent recommend the Board of Education approve the new funds as listed.
So moved. Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? And I'll make my comment that I make at every meeting, all this was posted on late Friday, so everybody's had a chance to review these items, and we certainly encourage the public to go to our website on the Friday before the meeting, and you will find our meetings posted. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero, and that's been one of the great things about electronic school boards, is this is all out there. Next item is a business item.
Yeah, we have two attachments on this item. The first one, actually, it's the second one listed, but it's a memo from our attorneys at Finney Law, Brad Gibson, regarding the process for selecting a construction manager. We have a couple of options, but the first step in the process is to advertise, so we're asking the board permission to advertise for a construction manager. With a project the size of $85 million, we're certainly going to need a company that has expertise in this. But like I said, there's two different options. So, we have our architects here from Rothleska. We have Dick Crabiel, who's going to kind of describe to the board the two different options, the two different routes we can go. Now, the RFP is for both, so the companies submitting proposals will be for both or either/or, and then we'll have to decide when we interview them, what, which route we want to go. We'll go ahead and turn it over to Dick.
Thank you, Andrew. I'm here to discuss the construction management services and briefly talk about what it is, construction management services, what they do, why we think it's a good idea for the district to hire a construction manager, who all uses construction managers, and when a construction manager typically starts working. So, and the last thing I'll do is compare the two primary models of construction manager that will be mentioned in the RFP that's going out. So, first of all, what are construction management services? The CM, or construction manager, is usually hired well in advance of bidding, and so you get those services on board early. You get a head start in scheduling, you get a head start in putting the costs together in support of your budget. The district then can get the most value out of these services, because that person continues along through the process, right through occupancy. The other administrative support-type tasks that a CM does include things like doing all the bidding, splitting it up into bid packages, managing cash flow, getting land surveys, tests for soils and construction materials. Construction managers have intimate knowledge of local bidding, climate, and who's, you know, who's out there, and who's hungry, and who's not, and where, you know, where you fit in that particular schedule. Coordinating, they also coordinate the complexities to the best advantage of your district. Some of the other advantages a CM brings are breaking bids into packages, as I mentioned, the, making sure that we aren't stacking bids on top of each other, and that we're not bidding against ourselves, organizing multiple projects to save district staff time, and scheduling projects in an orderly manner, so that if delays crop up, we can get them back into the, to the queue and keep things moving. So, one of the reasons that we're recommending that you go with a CM, schedule complexity, I think because we're looking at an occupancy date of 2017, it is an aggressive schedule. We will have multiple sites that move in at the same time, and, and some of these things we simply have to do over the summertime. We're not going to have the luxury of putting it off to a break. Also, in order to do that, we've got our eye on early site packages, so getting things started and get those, get those bid before the rest of the buildings. And as I mentioned, the multi-site complexities with the clean feeder system, of course, we want to make sure that everybody ends up in the right place at the right time. The other thing on a, on a CM is day-to-day, they're there on site every day, and they can leverage the knowledge that the district has, and, and short of cloning Todd Bowling, I think it's a good way to get, get that knowledge spread throughout the district on these multiple job sites. Not all of our clients opt to use the CM, but many who have this kind of a complex project, which really involves scheduled, scheduled driving, the finish date, do elect to do so, and really, your district's in good company with some of the other districts that have used CMs with us. Cincinnati Public Schools, Southwest Local Schools, Springfield, Toronto, Hillsboro. And then, non-school districts, University of Cincinnati Medical Center uses all CM, and Shriners Hospital was a job that we did recently that used to see that. So, there, there are two primary models, and the ad talks about both of them. The CM advisor, or CMA, and the CM at risk, or CMR. There's a slightly different aspect to each one, the way the contracts are written in both. As I mentioned, the CM's hired well in advance of the bidding, so that you get those services upfront. The advisor, the CM advisor continues to work throughout as a project administrator, and basically is a straight fee-for-services type contract. All of the construction contracts are then written directly to the district, and the CM then takes care of each one of those contracts, and you have multiple contracts as you go through, and they, they come on board and then go on off. The CM's role in that, as an advisor, is more independent from the companies who will actually be doing the work on the project. In CM at risk, the CM basically changes hats after the bidding starts, and your CM at risk becomes not only your administrator, but also becomes your contractor in terms of signing a master contract for all of the projects involved. So, they then hold subcontracts with the people that are doing each of the buildings. That then is taken in as one contract with them. You have a single source or a sole, solely responsible partner. Still, your costs are known, you're open to the district, it's, it's an open book accounting type system, so that when they take their subs, you'll see those, so you'll know where trade-offs have to be made in case some bids come in high, or if others come in low, and you say, well, listen, I'd like to use that money elsewhere. So, those are the kind of things that your construction manager will be shepherding through as you go through the process. One thing we do know is that it's important to get started with this person in partnering and teaming, and they do help with teaming with those subs or, or multiple contracts as they come on board, and that, we know, is a very important part of the successful outcome for your project. So, with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Which do you, on the school projects, I mean, not UC or the medical, but, but ones that are similar to us, which way do you see has worked better?
In, in almost all the past projects that we've done, we've been using, we've been seeing CM advisor, and the reason is that the state has set it up that way, and so that's been our traditional, you know, traditionally, that's been the way it's done. Last year, the state changed the way they do contracts, and we're seeing more and more people take on the CMR, or CM at risk type program. It's been very popular in the private sector, and now that it's available in the public sector, we see a lot of people taking that on. Couple of reasons for that. One, I think, is that it has the, it has the bonus of having the one contract. People think that's a little neater. There is some advantage to that. The other is that there's a, there's a little bit more quality control aspect to a CM at risk. The flip side of that is that that person is on the other side of the table from you now. You know, you've been working with them up through this point, now they're, now they're on the other side. So, there's, there's trade-offs, there's no one way to do it, and that's why we felt it was important to put it out both ways. And then, let's see who responds and what their rationale is, because we know who, you know, some of the good firms are around here, and a project of this size is likely to attract people from other, you know, from the region. So, I, I think it's a good idea to get it out there and, and take a look and see what's available.
Does it matter? You mentioned to, to part of Pam's answer to state project forces, which one you would choose. Now, is that for a project that's majority funded by the state, or a project which, in our case, we would fund with our own bond issue?
It's, they're very similar contracts. The state will, the state would use a state, what they call a CM at risk, CMAR. The AIA contract, which is, which is the kind that we're using here, calls it something different, but it's basically the same thing. They call it a CM as constructor with guaranteed maximum price. So, it's a mouthful, but, but they're very similar.
But because of the way we, if this would happen, because of the way we're funding it, we'd be in a little bit more control of our destiny, because we're not getting married to the state for funding on this.
That's very true. That's very true. You, with, if you go with the OFCC contract, then you have that other entity, and, you know, that's, that's the way that contract is set up.
Dick, is it true that the CMR can ultimately save money in the project compared to the CMA?
In, in talking to some of the CMs, I'd say the cost is about equal. You're going to see more exposed, although really, there are three components to the cost. One is the, is the upfront cost, the, what they call the pre-construction cost, and the other is the actual contract that you sign that gives them a, you know, a set percentage of the fee. And the third one is more of, I would, as an architect, I would call it a reimbursable, but your staff costs and things like that are actually a pass-through.
But so there's no, I mean, significant saving one way or another with...
Cost-wise, I think they're about equal.
Okay. Thank you.
Before I make my recommendation, I, one other thing, I wanted to let everyone know that we've had several master facility plan presentations, some of them have been canceled, so I'd recommend anyone to check the website for the new dates. We'll have some more this week and next week. One of the questions that's coming up is Colrain Elementary and air-condition. We are working with the architects to see if there's a way to air-condition Colrain Elementary as part of this. As a result, if we're able to do that, then all of our elementaries will be air-conditioned, but we're not, we don't have a solution yet. We're getting close to one, and we're hopefully, hopefully be able to announce something in the next couple of weeks with that, and that would be basically paying cash out of permanent improvement for that upgrade, potentially. So, I just wanted to get that information out there. So, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the RFP for construction management as advisor, or construction management at risk services as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just one question, and I don't know anything about this kind of, how you get the RFP out, but where do we advertise, Andrew? I mean, is it going to be in journals, newspapers?
It'll be in the Northwest Press. We're seeing with the Inquirer right now, they want over $1,000 to put it in the Inquirer, so we're looking to see if we want to do that or not. The way to really get it out is to get it to our architect, and he can get it out to, you know, plenty of people.
And it'll be on our website as well.
It'll be on our website, and then there's also some trade rags out there also that we can get it in. And, I mean, there's, there's better ways to get it out besides a newspaper where these people read.
Craigslist or something.
Well, can you reach out to...
I will.
Yeah, I was going to say, when I, when I worked for the architect, I mean, if we had something like this, we reached out to everyone, too, and let them know this was coming up, if you want to send an RFP in.
Okay.
So, I mean, you can...
I just don't want anybody to say, well, we didn't know about it.
Right.
You know, and I can just hear that already. So, okay.
There's some professional organizations also where you can get it on their websites and things like that, but we'll get it out there.
And I would, just to clarify what you said about some of the master facility planning being canceled, that was because of snow.
Yes.
And that's why they're being rescheduled.
Right.
As far as I know, the weather's been 60 for the past month, and we didn't have any snow days. So, but, but that, to clarify, that's why those are going to be rescheduled, and I guess we'll get that as well. Was there any other discussion?
Is this, since Ohio used to require multiple prime contractors, have you seen the process get a whole lot simpler since we opened it up to CMA and CMR? Ohio was about the only state that did it, and it would have made somebody like Todd pretty much our point man, and he would have been negotiating with four different prime contractors or something like that, and every one of whom thought they were in charge of the project. So, I think this is something this state has done, is, we don't hear a whole lot about the state doing things to make life easier for school districts, but I think this may be one of them.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, please call a vote. The motion carries five to zero. We'll move on to our next item.
Yes, we have certificated approvals. We have one extra duty contract, one event worker, five volunteers, and a resolution to hire one non-licensed coach. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the certified licensed personnel items as listed.
So moved. Second.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? And I've read through this Friday and the non-licensed coach is because no one else applied. I saw her name in there, this has escaped my recollection at the moment, but otherwise she's good once we hire her.
Yes, we, there's a process we have to do and pass the resolution.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero and our next item's a classified personnel item. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, we have one classified assistant. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the classified personnel items as listed.
Some moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Amy, please call a vote. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a curriculum and instruction item. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, I want to introduce Mr. Mike Holbrook with the Curriculum Department. You may be aware that we're currently offering dual credits with UC at our two high schools and there's a new program the state started this year for next school year called College Credit Plus, which is similar to what we're doing with a few, few new wrinkles to it, but Mike's going to kind of run us through those.
Good evening. What the state has done is they have combined two different programs that we've had in the past into this new College Credit Plus program. And this is something that tomorrow night at Colrain High School and Thursday night at Northwest High School, we're actually going to present to parents. And so I wanted to give you a little idea of what this program's about and give you the opportunity to ask some questions. First of all, what is College Credit Plus? Well, it takes the place of both what we called in the past dual enrollment where students could earn high school and college credit as well as post-secondary educational options. They've combined all of these into one program called College Credit Plus. And what the great thing about this program is, is that it's open to any student in grade seven through 12, college-ready students, many college course options, public colleges are free. So if we have a student that qualifies or students will have a significant number, for the first 30 semester hours every year, it is free.
Wow.
So they can earn 30 semester hours at a public university in Ohio at no cost to the parent or the child annually and they can earn up to 120 semester hours in the span of their seven through 12 career, free of charge. Private universities may choose to participate and that's going to depend on the individual private university. Great opportunity for kids and our parents. College readiness is going to be determined by the university as far as GPA may not be a qualifier, but there may be an entrance exam or some data points that they use. I know that and we'll get into that here in a minute, that different universities are using different data points. How to apply and get admitted, participate by getting admitted into college and this would require, I know in our case, taking an entrance exam through the University of Cincinnati. We've been very fortunate to be able to forge a partnership with the University of Cincinnati to offer these, some of these courses on our high school campuses for next year with our teachers becoming credentialed adjunct professors is basically what, what is happening with that.
Michael, one question, what is the average cost of, in a public college per hour that they charge?
Well, I can tell you, well, I've got two boys in college right now. I can tell you for a semester just with tuition, it'll run anywhere from eight to $12,000 a year and that's just tuition cost that is approved in the world, depending on the university in Ohio.
That's a public school?
Oh, yeah.
It's a little different than maybe when you and I were in college.
It was $320 a quarter when I started at UC.
I can't find.
You're really dating yourself now, Chris.
So you bought some A book for $320.
Yeah, grandpa, it's nine or 10 a year.
There's a senior elder here, Dan.
When you look at that and you look at the opportunities that students will have to earn up to 30 semester hours a year, you think about the cost savings and the head start that those students get when they go to college.
My gosh.
It's tremendous and there really isn't much of a downside at all.
What that's going to save them in student loans is unbelievable.
Well, it, it, it's a lot of opportunity there for students.
Absolutely.
Students can choose any course that applies towards a degree or workforce certification at a public or participating private college. You know, so if the private colleges want to participate in this, they can choose to do so, but they are not required to do so. All public schools in Ohio are required to do so. What's nice about this is that, and like I mentioned earlier, you graduate, you can earn up to 30 college credits per year and no more than 120 while you're in the program seven through 12. But if you think about 120 semester hours, you know, that, that's close to a four-year degree.
I know, I'm sitting here like doing the math, like, is this right?
Very close, yeah.
That is unreal.
Now, the likelihood of someone obtaining 120 semester hours is slim when you start looking at that, but you know, we have students that will be able to obtain 30, 40, 50 semester hours over a period of time. Students will have options and though we partner with the University of Cincinnati and we offer courses on our high school campus through UC, they do not have to select UC. If they wanted to commute and go to a satellite campus, as Sinclair has one up in Mason, or they wanted to go to a Cincinnati State, or if they wanted to work a partnership with Miami, they can do that and they would have to work with us obviously on their scheduling for their high school courses and they still have to take their core graduation requirements, but they have the opportunity to do that. We've partnered with UC, they've been great to work with thus far and we've been able to get a number of teachers credentialed in at both Northwest and Colrain High Schools so that our students can take that within the span of their regular school day, which is going to be real helpful to our parents. If you earn three or more semester hours in a course, that is the equivalent to one year of a high school class. So for instance, next year at Colrain High School, we are going to offer what they call Chemistry 1040 and Chemistry 1041, which is two of UC's chemistry courses. Students, if they complete that over the course of the first semester, will earn five semester hours. The second semester of that chemistry course is five additional semester hours. So they're in that course for a year and they're obtaining 10 semester hours from the University of Cincinnati and they're also getting high school credit for chemistry at the same time, at no charge to the parent or the child.
And those books are expensive.
And what scenarios can a qualified student use College Credit Plus? Okay, if they want to take a course that satisfies high school graduation requirements and they would get dual high school and college credit. If they completed the required courses and want to begin college work, you know, we have a lot of students that are seniors that, that need a, just a handful of courses really to graduation, the rest of those courses they're taking may be to start their college work. And if they just wanted to explore college and take a course in a subject area that interests them. And I think that bottom one sometimes gets overlooked. We have a number of our students and parents that this may be their first exposure to college and just to gain some confidence in, yes, I can do college work, it is a critical piece to getting them into that pipeline and I think sometimes that gets overlooked in this program. Books and fees, because we know that when you go to college, tuition's just one component. Books are paid for and fees are taken care of by either the college or the school district at no cost to the parent. Students that attend private colleges may have to incur a cost with books and fees. So once again, there is a differentiation between private and public. The other piece to this is that these credits are required to transfer to any public school in the state of Ohio. So even though we're offering the courses at UC, if the student decides to go to Miami or Ohio State or Bowling Green or OU, those credits have to be accepted. They may be accepted at a private institution, in-state or out-state and they may be accepted by an out-of-state public school in a different state, but that would be up to each of those at the discretion of those schools. Students do have to cover parking costs. That would be the only cost that they would incur. So if they're going to go down, we've got to pay them parking meter, that, that, that's a merit for students, but I think given the, given the value that they're getting there, that, that's, that's a pretty good deal. Students and parents must consider personal rules. I took a phone call today from a seventh grade parent and she asked, "What is the risk? My child is a high achiever, we're thinking about placing him into a course that is a psychology course at the, at the college level." And the two things that I cautioned them about to consider is number one, the maturity level of their child and the content being covered in that course. Because colleges and universities are not changing content that may be of a mature nature just because your child's 14 years old.
Right.
And the second, understand that there's going to be older students most likely in that class, they are not going to create a course at an age level just for your child. And so, you know, those were things that they hadn't really considered, but you know, they need to consider, you know, all of those options. If you fail a course or drop it, you may have to pay for it and that's something that's critical. It's free, if you drop it though, or if you fail it, you have to pay for the course. So that, that's the risk involved. It, it's a low-level risk, but nevertheless, it's still a risk and it's something that, that students need to really consider prior to jumping into this.
And are they told what the fee is for that particular class before they take it?
Yeah, they are. And that's going to be different depending on the college or university they go to.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah, it depends. I mean, Miami's fees are different.
No, this, this next, yep.
Weighted grades. By all, they have to be weighted at our highest weighted grade. So an AP course, a College Credit Plus course is at the same weighted as far, weight as far as GPA. So with that being said, there isn't an advantage or disadvantage. We've had a lot of discussion over AP and one of the advantages of AP is the fact that 99% of the time, private schools, public schools, in-state, out-of-state will accept that AP credit. The downside is you could be in the course all year and not get three or higher on the AP test and therefore not get the college credit.
Right.
And then you have to pay for it.
Well, yeah, you have to, yeah.
Or is that?
Well, no, that would be for an AP course.
Yeah, for the AP, you have to pay for it.
For an AP test. So actually, it could be better if you're unsure, like, you know, students maybe, like, I could take AP, but I might not pass it. So instead of taking the AP where I might not get credit, I could take it here and then, let's take it a C or something.
The, well, even the C's considered. Anything less than, anything other than an F.
And not have to pay the $95 or whatever it is now to take.
The other advantage with, with the College Credit Plus course, if it is a course that aligns with one of our state tests, for instance, we are going to be offering an introduction to political, to politics at both of our high schools. That aligns with our American Government course. Those students that are in the CCP or the College Credit Plus course will be exempt from taking the air assessment for government because they're in that course. And their grade in that course is what will be reported to the state as their score instead of taking the, you know, performance-based assessment at the end of the year exam.
What if they choose to take the test? They can do it?
I guess they could choose to, but I'm not so sure there would be many that would jump right down and take another series of tests. But that, that's one of those things that could alleviate some of our kids from taking some of, some of the tests they're currently taking now by doing this. Grades are, are applied graduation requirements, the grade you earn in college and that's another thing, if you do well, you're getting that benefit on two ends. If you do poorly, you know, you're, you're also getting that on both ends and the fact that that's, that does start your college GPA. There is no impact on athletic eligibility, that has been a question that has come up. It doesn't start your, your four years rolling as far as if you're a college athlete, there is no punitive action to taking this at an early level and I know that that's a, that's a big question that has come up.
And it doesn't count against your high school eligibility if you're taking all your courses at UC?
No. Of course you failed. Deadlines. Students have a form that they have to complete and give to us by April 1st and all that form says is that, "I'm interested in participating." It doesn't commit them to anything else other than showing us an interest. From there, we will gather those students that are interested and they will go through the screeners and then, and that will determine who does and who doesn't qualify for the courses. And even at that point, they're not committed to taking those, but they know they qualify and then they can make a decision and we'll have those by the end of the year. And so, you know, our hopes is by offering a plethora of courses at both Northwest and Colrain High School and you should have the list of different courses that I gave you in your packet, that, you know, we're going to have a, a much greater number of students start to participate in this, not only next year, but for years to come as, as we try to grow the program. And I personally, and I think we all do, we think it's really important to try to offer as many of these courses on our high school campuses. I think there's, I think there's something to the high school experience.
Right.
Leaving campus and that's great to have some of that exposure, but sometimes you miss some things as well when you're not on campus. So if we can provide the best of those worlds, you know, that, that's our ultimate goal and provide an array of options that, that, you know, are meaningful so that when students leave us, they don't just have 30 semester hours of college credit, but it's going towards something.
Sure.
I can tell you right now, all of us are taking English comp. You're going to take English comp at some point in your college. Being able to offer courses such as that, that irregardless of what major or what pathway you go into, it's going to be meaningful, it, it's what we've kind of done and UC has been great to work with thus far. Questions?
What kind of participation, what kind of participation levels have there been for PSEO and dual enrollment in the past and do you see this ramping up significantly at least in the first year or do you think?
I, well, I can tell you this, right now, we have less than 10 students that are participating on Lloyd Off campus. We, on campus, we do offer some courses now, but in most of those cases, the students have had to pay for those courses. So with that being said, I do know that money was a significant barrier to many of our students. So, you know, I do anticipate us having double, if not triple, the number of students issued just because of the cost alone.
And the fact that it's so much open to all at AP, you almost have to plan seventh, eighth grade to, in some of these classes to get.
You have to go a certain pathway to be able to get into that AP course, that's right. Whereas in some of the courses that we're offering starting next year, you don't necessarily need to be in that pathway. You know, we're offering some, some foreign language courses which you will have to be in an accelerated pathway to be able to compete in some of those courses, but some of the chemistry courses and the anatomy and physiology course that we're offering and the intro to American politics course, not necessarily so.
Michael, do most other school districts around us offer this to their students? Do you know?
It's, it's a combination. I can tell you right now, this is something that has gone on in other school districts for years, just depending on, on the district and the connections. It really came down to connections and networking. I can tell you that we are offering as many college courses on campus as anybody in this area, which is a good thing. And I think it's important that our teachers teach them and we're working and looking at current teachers credentialed and looking even futuristic with our hires to hire folks that, that are close if, or if not credentialed when we hire them. But, you know, my goal is to continue to grow those on campus because once again, that's why I think we're going to get the biggest benefit.
To me, this sounds like a fantastic opportunity. I too have a, have two kids and one's at Ohio State and one's at UC and it's fantastically expensive to send them there. I'd love to hear sometime after April 1st how the enrollment turned out.
Yeah, and I'll probably get a better feel for after Thursday night when we see the attendance at these meetings, but I can tell you just from the volume of phone calls that I've gotten in the last three weeks since we've started putting information out on this, I probably have talked to 50 to 60 parents over the last 10 to 15 days just on this particular subject. It's almost a cynical conversation, what, what's the catch?
Right.
It really is and it really isn't a catch, it's just a wonderful opportunity.
It's like buying two new cars at once, sending them to the school and I'm sure you know that and, you know, please, whatever you can do to get this message out. you know that, and, you know, please, whatever you can do to get this message out.
Well, and we're going to do that, and over the next couple of years, we really anticipate this growing. It's great for kids, it's great for our district, there's really no downside to it.
I think next year, of course not, but next year, what'll be nice is to bring some of those kids that have already participated and let them talk to the rest of the kids.
Maybe three or four years, hopefully some of them have degrees or coming back and--
Right, that's amazing.
Mike, my niece, I'm not sure if it was the same program, but got through college in three years instead of four because of a similar program. It's probably been eight or nine years ago. But my question is, what does the university, is there state reimbursement? Maybe you addressed that, but what's in it for them? Because it seems to me that they're losing potential business, and with what they're charging, free versus whatever you said--
They're not just likely to do this.
But, I mean, does the state give them a certain reimbursement? How do they, what's in it for them?
There is a funding structure depending on how the services are delivered, and I can tell you this, the general state guidelines are this, is if you're offering a course on your high school campus with your teacher teaching it, it's $40 a semester hour a kid that is reimbursed to the college or university through the school district. If it's a course that is on our campus and we bring in a professor to teach it on our campus, it's $80 a semester hour. And if a student leaves our campus and goes takes it off the campus on the college campus, it's $160 a semester hour. That's kind of the general funding structure that's been set up for this. Now, some universities have tinkered with that, they can lower those rates, they can't raise them, and I know, for instance, Sinclair has played with those rates and will witness become more affordable, but most are going with the 160, 80, 40 structure.
Some universities also see this as a very good marketing recruiting tool.
And there are certain universities that are refusing to offer courses on the high school campus. They will only allow this to happen is if you go to one of their satellite or range campuses or onto their main campus. So, we're fortunate that UC, you know, isn't one of those, and it's an attractive option for many of our kids.
Thank you.
All right, we actually need to approve this, this MOU with UC. Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the 2015-16 college credit plus partnership with the University of Cincinnati as listed.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Amy, please call a vote. The motion carries five to zero. Our next item is a fiscal item.
Yes, it's the standing item to get an update on the financial records online, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Wells.
Amy, I talked to you last week about this, and I did get a phone call from Spencer Gross up in the treasurer's office, and he had indicated that this is really coming along. He, I said, what is the level of cooperation with our district? He said, it's been fantastic, and you have gotten him every, the things you've sent in have made their way there, and they're just working out a few details, and they hope to have this going by the end of March, this, March this month.
Right, and that's where it stands. They're still working out the bugs and trying to get to talk to each other.
And that's, it's just working out that little bug in the system, so I was pleased to get that good report that, how well you've done in getting the information in, so. Is there any other comments from other board members? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. Northwest notables.
Yes, Paula DeCrawley's going to come up and give us a few highlights on the Northwest notables.
Okay, we have just a handful of notables. Northwest High School senior Laura Phelps was named a national merit semifinalist in the fall, and we are pleased to announce that she is a national merit finalist. She's one of only 7,600 students nationwide who are given this honor out of one and a half million students who take the PSAT test. So, Susan Smith stated that this is the first time in school history that we have a student named as a national merit finalist, so she was thrilled with that information. All winners of the Merit Scholarship Awards are chosen from the finalist group based on their abilities, skills, and accomplishments without regard to gender, race, ethnic origin, or religious preference. The finalists are evaluated on their academic record, information about the school's curricula and grading system, two sets of test scores, the high school official written recommendation, information on their student activities and leadership, and the finalist's own essay. So, we did recognize Laura in the fall. We do our semifinalists and not our finalists, so I wanted to share that information with you. And then Colrain High School senior Abigail Steinbeck was chosen to be Colrain High School's representative at the 60th annual Student Recognition Luncheon presented by the Kiwanis Clubs. Abigail will be publicly honored along with other deserving students from the greater Cincinnati area on April 28. Their keynote speaker will be Rocky Boyman, former NFL player and current sports commentator, so we congratulate Abigail as well. The mock trial club at Colrain High School is an innovative hands-on experience in the law and court procedures for students. The students spend the entire school year researching, studying, and preparing a hypothetical courtroom trial, and these students did compete at the UC competition on Friday, January 30th. They competed against 35 other teams and 40 teams in the Cincinnati District Competition. Michael Hillman won the Best Attorney Award at the UC Invitational. Sasha Feldman won the Best Attorney Award at the District Competition. Rebecca Bruner won a Best Witness Award in the District Competition, and we congratulate all of our mock trial participants. And every year, the Business Professionals of America selects 16 business students from Ohio as state scholarship finalists based on their academics, leadership, and service to the community. This year, four Northwest High School students were selected, the most students ever selected from a single high school in Ohio. So, we congratulate Amani Thompson, Russell Baldrick, Ayman El Kassam, and Mason Fawcett on this honor. These students will have the opportunity to compete in Columbus at the BPA State Leadership Conference later this March for several scholarships. All four finalists are students in Butler Tech's Financial Services Program at Northwest High School. And then finally, two Colrain High School swimmers went to state this past week for the first time in history. Colrain sophomore Carrie Tepe finished a strong 22nd in the state in the 100 breaststroke, and Colrain freshman Haley Trotter finished 10th in the state in the 100 backstroke. They will both be recognized next month when we recognize our winter athletes who have gone to the state on it. Thank you.
Jenny, did you get that? Most students in any high school in the state of Ohio go Northwest. Just checking.
We have a terrific BPA program here in our district.
That's, lots of great things going on in all the buildings.
Thank you, Paula De. Our next item is Community Communications. If there's anyone in the audience that has a question or comment about anything that was discussed this evening, please approach the microphone. I've seen no one, we'll move on to the next item, which is Other Board Items, and we'll start with Mr. Heater.
Dan, nothing from me.
Mr. Detschel.
Just one thing, Dan, I just wanted to congratulate the two wrestlers from Northwest High School that qualified for the state meet. I believe that's upcoming on Saturday up in Columbus, so good luck to those guys. And the boys bowling team from Colrain qualified for the state bowling for the first time ever. So, congratulations to those guys.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Harlow?
Yeah, I would like to express our condolences to the family of Amanda Ludwig and her mother, Elaine, who were killed in a car accident on Saturday on 275. You probably saw that on the news. Amanda was the number two, finished second in class at Northwest in 2014, and Mrs. Ludwig was a friend of my mother-in-law, so we'd like to just extend our sympathies.
Certainly agreed. Cam?
Just, really don't want to talk about the weather anymore because I'm hoping we're done with that S-N-O-W, but something I saw on Facebook that I thought was so appropriate, and I reshared it. Lots of times, as we all know, the profession of being a meteorologist, they can pretty much make mistakes all the time and still be back every night with their jobs. I know it's very difficult as a superintendent to, you watch that weather and you see, and sometimes you make the calls, and sometimes the snow doesn't end up coming, or the ice or whatever, but somebody, and I think there was only one day we had that it didn't end up coming and it was predicted, but this picture, I believe it was in Salt Lake City, Utah, but it was a picture of a school bus laying on its side in the snow, and they interviewed this superintendent, and he said, I would, I don't remember the exact quote, but basically he would rather be wrong, you know--
Fifty times.
Fifty times than to put our bus drivers and our children at risk, and something happened to even one student. So, I would like to thank Dr. Jackson. I think we've erred on the side of caution, and as a mother, I hope that's what we always do, and if we mess up one day, oh, well, you know. But that was very compelling, that, and it went out, and I know everybody kept reposting it, so.
I would second that, too. As someone that puts a child on a bus every day, actually, my wife usually does it, but anyway, certainly, certainly it's a no-win situation, and I'm glad that we err on the side of caution.
I've learned that parents are passionate about that subject. They often email me when they're passionate about it.
Thank you, Michael. My comment would be, I believe the Colrain Winter Guard won out at Milford Saturday. I tend to go to a lot of those events, and they did a great job, and they have a wonderful show. To Mr. Harlow's comments, that the particular situation with our family over at Northwest is horrific, and I hope that they accept the sympathy of this board, and if there's anything that the board can do for them, obviously, we would do that. I don't know what you can do, but it's a good reminder to always be careful when you're out. So, we'll move on. And Executive Session.
Yes, we are moving into Executive Session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the motion to move into Executive Session as listed.
So moved. Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Could you repeat that?
Did you anticipate that we'll be taking action after this?
We'll take no action.
Okay, so they'll, you're welcome to stay till the end of the meeting, I mean, till we come back, but we will not be taking a vote afterward. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Amy, please call a vote. Do not shut your computers off. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you.